While I. And I had asked for money for skate park project, for the playground, um, kayak rentals if you're interested in other projects. And from what I heard, that did not go through, so I'm here to question for that again.
Did the, did the thirty thousand dollars that you went back to the office and found out that was taken?
So that's separate, so the arena oper- the arena capital improvement fund, when we had our, but the first meeting, you were, it was said on your papers that there was fifteen thousand in the capital improvement fund. I said there wasn't, so there was, when I went back and checked, there is not. There's about fifteen thousand in the capital improvement fund for the arena.
But we are getting money for the arena, right? One million, one point five million.
For the, yes, for the compressor system, yeah.
Just the compressor? We can't use that money for anything else?
No, I don't believe so. But we are.
Technically, we could use it for other arena things, but the compressors are gonna use up these things.
And we are probably likely going to be short on the total amount of the project. We have the pole for the electricians coming, lighting, and I don't know if it's open cover yet. Possibly roll over from this year, still covering it as well.
So the only thing you have in your rec equipment is nine thousand dollars?
And that's going for the lawnmower, so I'll have nothing.
That's going for a lawnmower.
Yep.
Well, where do you see the rec equipment fund nine thousand?
It was, it was.
On a different paper.
Oh. It was from.
Those worksheets?
Yeah.
Here. Alright, I know that.
I know, I'll show it.
So this show, this showed that it was fifty eight thousand, it's actually how much Caitlin?
About fifteen.
Well, we have to look at the twenty seven thousand, because that six months, it was at twenty seven. Minus the support.
It's like.
It was about seventeen.
Recs.
As.
But there's only ninety thousand, and I looked at what we're giving her now, we're not giving her no money.
It's a lot.
We didn't allocate anything to her.
Okay. Run a department on nothing. I missed the conversation there, so where, where is it? What says fifty eight thousand, or what's the total?
Twenty seven.
Is that twenty seven thousand?
Minus the support.
Oh, minus the money you paid out for.
The support.
Okay, so.
So we have fifty eight last year, and you guys took thirty thousand out to put towards operating. So then that's where we got the twenty seven, and then the only thing we purchased out of that was the support, which was around seventy.
The maintenance that we did all the painting.
Yeah, so we have about fifteen thousand.
So. I do have a question on these, on the, on the worksheets that we have, pages seven through, seven, eight, and nine. On the bottom of page seven, it says the total fund, one oh one, is one ninety five, or one million nine hundred forty five thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars and eighteen cents. And then when you go to the next page, those balances are carried right over, I believe, and then one oh one general fund is, on that sheet is two million, seven hundred twenty four thousand, seven hundred fifty five dollars and sixty three cents. Aren't those, isn't that just a carryover? Aren't those numbers supposed to be the same here?
I don't have those worksheets, please.
I'm, I'm just curious which number is.
So on the top, the general fund where it says, at the very top, the one one forty one hundred, this is taking out, um, our, uh, basically your payroll and things like that, all of it. This one down here, this is also showing you, um, any money that was in that account in the very beginning of the year, and so that gives you a different balance on that one.
Hold it, I gotta follow along here. So at the bottom of page seven, the very bottom line, I'll lay it to the right, it says, well, it says total fund one oh one, it says, the first one says balances of one one twenty four, and it's three hundred, three hundred, three million five hundred sixteen thousand, and it's your today income, a hundred seven, one million seventy three thousand. And then it's, uh, dispersments of two million, six hundred forty three thousand. Now, the dispersments, that number carried over the same. So why are they saying this? Cause it's, it's saying it's the same date, and it's the same line item, and one oh one general fund.
The way this was set up was kind of hard to explain. Um, this one on the one oh one on the bottom is just, is looking at your entire general fund, where this one oh one forty one hundred up here is just looking at the forty one hundred. So, and just these little, these few funds under it, so you're getting a difference.
I know, okay, so I, I get that line item to be different, cause it's not even the same number, so I'm after it. But this line item down here, total fund, one oh one, is the same line item as the top of the next page. It's got the same date, six thirty twenty four. Isn't that just a carryover from this page?
It's not. It's not. Um, this might be something that's easier if I explained it in my office versus to operate in here, cause it's just a little, it's a nuance between the things. Um, it's not. These funds on the bottom.
So, i- is this, this is the general fund number that has a six thirty?
Yes.
Two million, seven hundred twenty four dollars, seven hundred fifty five cents, right?
Yep.
So the number that we had, is that, the number that you came back from the office with when we started the other day, when we were deciding about doing the levy and then taking money out of the general fund?
I said at the moment, we had like two point nine, I think.
It wouldn't have been more, because it would be, we were taking money out of that, right?
Nope, it would be more, because we, um.
Had an income?
Yep, we had revenue come in, uh, through property taxes.
So the number that I have on the worksheet here is two million, seven hundred fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars, so that's what we then subtracted the proposed budget from. So that's less than the six thirty number. You just said it should be more.
No, I was saying that the number that I had come back when you said we'd go to the office and see what was in the budget at the moment.
Yeah.
Um, that number was more than what we have in our six months, because we had revenue come in, so.
Okay, so, I thought that was the number that we used right here, subtract, so we, no, no.
We, we were working with the, the work papers, not the, the fund summaries.
So should this number right here be on the work papers? If this is the one we're subtracting the, um.
That one was.
The proposed budget from?
That one was on the work papers, but we had updates on it, so it changed that number.
I guess I just need, I'm just a little confused on where.
Since we did the budget already, that's part of the problem. We were looking at numbers that's in June. Since then, we have our money that's come in, and we've got revenue that's come in, these numbers have changed since we worked on our June thing.
This, this is, the numbers that we've got on here were numbers that should have been from June thirtieth, cause the budget is all based on June thirtieth.
So on.
This number here, and the number here are not the same number.
No, because these are proposed and not factual.
We can't propose with the, how much money we're gonna subtract the proposed budget from. The proposed is underneath it, we subtracted it from the big number. Right? Are you with me on this? Am I?
I'm puzzled, but I, I'm confused already.
So, so this number.
This is the number that we, this is the number that we subtracted the proposed budget from.
Because that was. So if you look at your budget work papers, on the one that we did on that date, it would have been that number on the bottom. There were some, um.
Page four.
Will say discrepancies, uh, that I found and put in here, so this is the up to date budget work paper. The one that I just gave you, was the up to date one, so it's.
Are you talking, are you talking this worksheet, or?
This one here, this is the first one, this is the middle one.
Yes, that one. Yes.
Right in here.
Yep.
It is all updated.
Yep, it has everything that you guys discussed.
Right, that's for the proposed budget, I get that.
Um. It just didn't have.
That number and this bottom number right here are the same number.
So that's what we're subtracting from.
Two thou- two million five hundred eighty thousand, I'm talking about the number we're subtracting that from.
Yep, and that was the total of the proposed work papers. We're only working with proposed right now.
But don't we have to subtract the proposed from?
No, not what we have currently, no.
So what is this top number that we wrote down when we subtracted?
That was what we originally got on our budget work papers for the total. But because there was some things that we missed, that I had to add in, this is our new total.
I don't see that number anywhere.
The two point eight on the very bottom of your budget work paper.
This.
The new brand new.
This is our brand one.
Two point eight oh eight two seventy.
This, we can throw that, throw that in the garbage, because we know a lot of our work done.
So this one, we had originally, did get that two point seven, whatever was our total that went through on the
That's right.
Budget meeting, that was our, this one, that was our total on that page. But because there were a couple of things that weren't entered on here, out of all of our budget work papers that you had. Uh-uh, that was the total of our revenue. This is, this is revenue. This was our proposed total, and so we subtracted that from.
So where is that number on here?
So that's what we got, we must not have written it down. I suppose you probably just wrote it right here, instead of writing it on there. So this was the total that we had gotten on our.
Do you have a, let me see, one, do you have this piece real quick?
Yeah.
That's it, yeah.
Same. Page four.
Yeah.
You don't have it written down either?
Oh. When you're looking at what number?
That's two million, seven hundred and fourteen.
That was proposed, what we have in our general fund, right?
Right. That's what I'm saying, so where does that, where, that's our general fund number, isn't that, isn't this our general fund number right here? Is that our general fund number as of six thirty twenty twenty four?
We were working off.
Page eight.
Yeah. Two million, seven twenty four, seven fifty five.
Another general fund? Okay, so if that's our general fund that we're subtracting the proposed budget from, those numbers don't match, that's what I'm saying, I don't get it.
I have different figures, too, I guess. I went down every one of these on the budget works, and outside of a change on the totals for the administration and so on. Uh, I had two, one million, two seven four 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 six, and there was one change on this for about a few hundred dollars. At the bottom of this is two eight eight zero, does not jive with the bottom of this, two eight oh eight two seventy. Now, the one on our resolution, two eight eight zero, is about eighty thousand dollars, seventy two thousand dollars more than the two eight oh eight.
You're missing the, um, the sixty four thousand dollar arena operating on yours, Jim?
Oh, it's, okay.
No, I think that was with this change.
No, it's there.
Is it there?
Everything, I went down every single one of these and compared it with this, and every one of these is identical to, to our resolution, except for the, uh, recreation, which was one ninety two eight one three compared to one ninety three, one one three. So, we're about eighty thousand difference, seventy two thousand difference, I guess.
Everything is on this page.
See, that two eight oh eight two seventy does not match with the two eight eight zero six twenty, and they should match, that's the proposed budget uh, compared to our resolution.
There's. There's a lot of, um, off of the, the budget work papers, all of these funds aren't all on the resolution.
But they're identical. Every one. As far as I could tell, was identical to, uh, I think, I'll double check again. Yeah, it's, they're all identical. So why are the numbers different? I tend to believe what's on the resolution is being the more accurate figure, plus the change we made in the, uh, recreation.
Which was just.
So the rec, we, we went from one ninety three to grabbed it one ninety two, but that's, that's just a few hundred, a few hundred dollars, yeah. And I must have been asleep when, when I left my house, cause I didn't bring my calculator. Well, that's okay. I'll do it in my head. Wanna see some numbers, Caitlin? Wait.
So there's, there's the library ran to marina, we just. We're gonna have to go and keep one of the sums in it, uh, one of the formulas in it add in. This is three. This total on this, uh, work paper should be the same as the one on the levy, or on the, uh, resolution.
I think it was seventy two thousand and fifty dollars off.
This is, this is. Yep. It's a U L S, it says that.
Okay, so it's, it's because the sixty four four hundred, the seventy six fifty, and the three hundred difference from the recreation weren't, they didn't add in to this total on the bottom of the budget papers.
Which ones did you have?
The sixty four four hundred.
On what?
On the budget work papers.
Yeah.
So that, uh, arena operating.
You didn't turn on the ground, did you?
So that.
No?
No. The E D A's.
Oh, you need to use your turn?
I got, and the difference between the recreation. So, with the change of those, so that was the change in, uh, the amounts. So those three didn't, uh, add in.
They weren't added into this, that's why the difference between that.
Nope. They didn't, uh, the formula didn't, uh, fold into it, so. So yeah, so that's why they didn't, weren't to the bottom.
So the real number is two eight eight zero.
Two eight 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 six twenty.
Six twenty.
Did anybody add up on the budget work papers? We have the totals in the first group of, uh, one million, seven, or one million, I see, seven two four.
Okay, I made a mistake.
Okay.
It's supposed to be the same. I would think, so Glenn, what I'm looking at, what I'm confused about is this. This is pretty, this is the thing we got to refer to.
Yeah.
This is, this is.
Right.
So, these numbers, it's the same page, it's the date. Should be. Should this number be the same? This is the same page as this one, and the date is.
Yeah, but there was pages that were taken, they were wrong, and they give us brand new pages, and we're supposed to put them into this packet. Yes, there was different pages, and they found the errors on when they were running through, and they give us brand new pages that we're supposed to put these into.
Those were the ones.
Those were the ones, and you were supposed to rip the other ones out of the packet. No, those. No, they found, they found the errors, and then they get that's why.
Were mine having?
Well, I don't know what it was, it was errors, that's why we got those three different pages.
It was July's and not, uh, June's.
Right. So you were supposed to take them.
Okay, I didn't get that, but I just figured she gave us the same, so it'd be easy for us to refer to it.
No, that day, that day we did, that day we did the budget that they handed it to us, and said, these are the pages, take the other ones out of your packet, these are the new ones, and you were supposed, we were supposed to be working on. That's why there's eight and eight, you got the same page, but the one was supposed to be ripped out of your packet, you were supposed to substitute it. And the only reason I know that is when I went to get my packet, Kirsten took my packet and actually waited out and changed my numbers.
I missed the memo.
Yeah. That's what is throwing me off. So when we got here, I already had it burnt, one of you guys didn't, they give me the three pages to change on.
Okay, so the two million eight oh eight two seventy, that's correct, this one is not correct.
So red. So they added wrong.
Yep. This one is added wrong, resolution was added wrong.
What is the number?
The one that's on there.
Yeah, on the budget, two million eight oh eight two seventy.
That is correct.
They added it wrong.
Worksheet is right, but the resolution is wrong.
Correct.
So that is. I'll amend my, uh, adoption of the resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven with the changes of two eight zero eight dash two seven zero for the total budget.
I'll second that, just for discussion.
Motion by Anderson, second by Hoheisel. To amend the, uh.
I don't mean to be a smartass, but eighty thousand, great, it's gonna be the same as your first one.
No. No, we were off the other one, nice try.
I tried to help you out.
To amend the, uh, motion on table, change the number, total budget number, two million, eight hundred and eight thousand dollars, two million, two hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's more to my liking, that makes a little more sense, cause eighty thousand or seventy two was a little bit different. Are we gonna help the echo a little bit, or are we gonna just leave her sit, or what?
Well, there was some discuss, I thought we had some discussion. I know jogged my memory, I thought. jogged my memory, I thought there was some discussion on Caitlin was gonna be applying for some grants. For some stuff, for.
One, one grant, yeah.
Okay, for.
For multiple things, yeah.
Yeah.
But if we get that, it's a fifty fifty match, so I can't apply unless you have the funds to funding.
Correct, correct. And I'm not, I'm not only, this might not be rude, I thought you mentioned one in that discussion. You want, do you remember what you said?
It was, we would, we would match the matching grant if we got the grant.
After we, after we decided how much that was, because we wouldn't know at this point how much money you would need, but if you got the grant. Glenn, Glenn, I couldn't quote the whole thing when we talked about it, but there was discussion that, let's see.
What you got.
How you come out on the grant, and then we would know how much money we need to give you.
And we would fund it. The city would fund it out of.
If the grant's approved?
Yes.
Yes.
And if it's not approved, then you'll project?
That's as far as the discussion went.
Because I think, so, I don't think I know, um, fifty thousand would cover, which is what I, my initial ask optimally was what I asked, would cover, um, the skateboard park, the kayak rentals and money for the playground with or without the grant. If we got the grant, we would have more money to put into it now.
Right. I, we did discuss the kayak rentals kind of an extent, extent, and I, I remember right, that did not have support.
Okay.
I mean, am I right, you guys? Is that, I don't wanna speak for everybody else. I'm trying to jog my memory on this. This was a little while back and there was a lot of stuff discussed on here. But I think you had support for the park. And for.
So the park, there's no more grants then?
Or I mean, the skate, the skateboard park, and what else did you have? That'd be replied for what you had for.
That was kayak rentals, um, and garbage cans. Garbage cans too, but I was, the kayak rentals, the playground, or not the playground, the kayak rentals, the skate park and the garbage cans. I really think the kayak rentals, the I triple R B will like, I really do, because it increases spending in their area, which is one of their biggest things. Um, I don't know that garbage cans and skate park will get approved as easily if it's not including that. That's why I, I just think that that is something that they look at, that they would like.
I think we.
No, no, our discussion was, because I'm the one who brought it up, was we would be willing, if you go ahead and get a grant, and it has to be fifty fifty, that we would come up with the money at that time to match it. If you don't, seeing as we didn't cut budgets and we came up with where we're at, we weren't in favor of raising anymore. Because we went through and gave what you had. But if you do get the grants, that yes, we would match the fifty fifty with no problem. So if the grants come through, you have money to work with. The, the kayaks, yeah, was not supported because we don't have enough information, whether or not.
When did we hear about the grants? That you didn't know? I know the deadline to apply, that grant.
Yeah.
The, the deadline to apply is this year? Do we hear that next year or this year?
No, I think I feel like it was like the end of this year we would hear, maybe November. I think, I'm guessing November when we're getting that other money. But, I mean, I'd have to look, but last year, um, when they did that, the second cycle started in like, right away after they gave out money. And that was closed in February, mid February, so they, I believe it's right away. It's like it was in a couple months of the closing.
I guess the way I looked at it was, um, if we didn't get the grant, we would cut the garbage cans out and still get the skate park, still get the other things done. Right? We, I would cut it and what was most important would get done. And I'd say the skate park is pretty important and the playground is ultimately important. I mean, a playground is independent on a grant right now. The playground is already partially funded and there is, I'm waiting on three grants through the line and close to get that done. But, um, we don't know how much we could get from that, so. That's a separate thing from these grants entirely.
And like I say, that was our discussion was, yes, if the grants come through, if it's a fifty fifty, because we've done it for other departments in the past. And didn't do it at budget time. Fire department has gotten grants, we had to be fifty fifty. Uh, we come up with the money at that time, and if they don't come through, in order to put any more, we would have to either go back and cut some of these budgets in order to get you some money, or turn around, raise the levy, which.
But I don't understand, so I'm not trying to be difficult, but if you say the money there if the grant goes through, why wouldn't it be there if the grant doesn't go through? It's there.
Oh, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna obligate the money at this time, is what it is. That's our concept. We are not gonna obligate the money out of the general fund at this time. We already robbed the gen, I shouldn't say, we took out of the general fund so that we didn't have to raise the levy. So at this point, we're already taking out of the general fund. If you do get more, if, like they say, if you get the grants and it's a fifty fifty, we do have some money in the general fund, but we're not gonna do it right now, because if, you know, if we give it, if we give it to you, then we're, we're taking out of the, out of that for future, or some of the other projects that we might have to put up with. So after, it was a long discussion, we talked about it, and that's what we came up with, was, yes, if you get the grants, it's matching.
For the skateboard park and garbage.
Whatever, if, whatever grant you put in for.
There's one grant I'm putting in for, and it's for the skateboard park and.
So if you get a fifty fifty.
And then, so the playground is not dependent on that, so, um, we just, if I need money for the playground, I come and ask that later to, I mean.
Oh, you have some money to work with, maybe, maybe we would do it, maybe not. I'm not gonna say that, yes, we're gonna fund that.
Well, we have at least two hundred and thirty thousand right now.
Oh, you need to spend two hundred and thirty thousand and then see where you're at. To come with us and just say, hey, I need fifty, eighty thousand dollars, and not really sit down and tell us exactly what it's for.
I didn't say, I just told you what it's for.
I know what, I know what you're saying, what it's.
And it's not, I said fifty and eighty, the eighty was a joke. I said fifty, and I broke down exactly what it was for.
No, I don't. When, when, when some.
I broke down exactly what it was for.
Listen to me. When somebody comes in at budget time, and they come in and tell me a line item, and I ask them a question, what are you spending that on? And they can't exactly tell me what it's going to be, and I'm saying, your part.
Did I not exactly tell you? I said the skateboard park, I said garbage cans, I said the playground, and I said the kayak rentals, and I broke down the amounts. You have paperwork with the amounts broken down. I am not lying, I am not saying without.
So call the question, I'm done, that's enough.
Caitlin, I just wanted to give you this information.
There's no information. I called the question, put the bullet to the table. There is no more discussion when you call the question.
The grant is, the, the, the grant is due October first.
Yes. And not for the playground, for the skateboard park.
Yes.
And I understand, I'm not.
Call the question.
Culture and tourism, October first.
Call the question to the call. Follow Robert's rules of order. Call for a roll call, please.
Okay, we got a motion on the table to accept the annual tax levy and general budget for twenty twenty four.
With changes.
Twenty twenty five, excuse me. To the tune of, uh, two million eight hundred eight thousand dolla, two million two hundred eight thousand two hundred and seventy dollars.
And tax levies. Roll call.
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White, absent. Anderson.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yeah, he said. Public safety committee, but our recommendation was the table, we need more information, so there is nothing to reform at this time, this is how it's made. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Lassie, are, yep, to adjourn meeting at five twenty. All favor?
All right.
That thing is twenty nine, you the whole damn time.